Come forward.
You guys could just sign in.
Sign in and identify yourself. Town is at home. There we go. Put your hand when you do this.
Okay.
So, Robert Pace?
Robert Pace, Robert Pace Jr. Thank you, sir.
So, wanting to go over where you were last time?
Well, last time there was, we brought in the plan. It was actually, it didn't show the whole lot.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not like here or something.
And we have, we had, you want them to locate the, within the pond, so that it was shown on the plan, and you didn't think that they would record it as is anyway. You wanted some acreage on these and so on. That's where we are.
And, does everyone know this house?
That's the existing house. This is an old foundation that's half of our foundation. And... That's where we are.
So, we were curious about the pond, but also about this lot.
Right.
Four and a half acres.
I don't know.
Four and a half. So, are we looking at three lots tonight, or we're looking at four lots in the building?
We're looking at four.
Okay.
Anyway, there's some divisions into four lots. We can tell where we were.
So, three regular frontage, one backland.
It's the one that we looked at last time.
Yes, yeah.
We were missing the full lot.
You just missed my presentation.
Sorry. My fault.
No, you wanted the pond located.
In the fore.
Acreage. The, the existing house was on here. And the title block, you were concerned that they, the full lot. Right, exactly, okay, because it didn't have.
So, you didn't have a title block, you had the full lot.
Right.
Let's see the pond now. See, you've got the frontage, these three acres.
Two, two, two acres.
How many acres is the fourth one?
It's, it's one and a half.
And that's, that's what a backland lot has to be for.
Has to be minimum four and a half.
What's your frontage have to be? I thought it was a fifty-fifty, okay. Next town it was on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Backland lot, minimum, uh, minimum frontage is fifty. So, a four and a half acre lot.
But they can have the driveway in Berlin, and then come into that, or?
If they get a driveway permit from Berlin and from us, they could do that.
But it's, but it's not necessary, because that is the town line. So, we got enough frontage in.
Oh, yeah, we got a town line here.
Yes, right.
Eighty-five there. Oh, okay. And then the backland lot, for sideball, and the four and a half acres, there's no way that's more than three acres, so one and a half is up there.
Right. This is actually a pretty nice lot. Goes up and back there and kind of levels up.
So, is this, is this a scenic road?
I know Fry Road was, I mean, I don't believe this one was.
Everyone is, but it, we only met it for, uh, stone walls and.
Yeah, no, it's just the, the stone walls?
Yeah.
I've done that on Fry Road, so I'm pretty familiar with it.
There's no wall here, is there?
I, I know there was on Fry.
Is there on Fry, okay.
There's, there's so much overgrowth there.
Sure.
Okay, you really can't even stand it.
Yeah, because there's a gate down there, and here we can get through.
Yeah, you have to see that gate there.
Yeah.
Pretty clearly.
It is a scenic road.
Yeah.
It's not pertinent for.
Yes, so say, for the A and R, that's not relevant, but, but for driveway permits and.
Building.
Before you touch the wall.
Yeah, no, they've been all, they've been all over, they've been all over us to clean that area up, which we've been doing as well, so.
I've walked through the, with the former planner, and she told me exactly how we had to do it. And it was, you know, we walked out, we speak out where we wanted to go in, how many feet we were going to stir, how we're going to put it back together.
Like, is that we did that on Fry Road?
Yeah, the general rule of thumb is keep the stones on the property and try and do something nice with them.
Well, over Fry Road, there was a couple openings, so it was kind of like we could take those and put them in, it was, I think I, with that, with that view.
Mm-hmm. Sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Sounds okay to me.
Good.
Good, to write a motion to accept the A and R.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the A and R, shown on the, uh, plan prepared by Gerard Survey Company and Associates Incorporated. Out there this, uh, date December 6, 2013, for Berlin Road, subdividing the area into four lots. Three regular and one backland. Seconded that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against? So, Eric, I will do that for my line for this.
Yes.
It takes a little longer to sign it than. Yeah, I watched it the last time.
Did I everybody sign?
Yeah, there was a lot, there were a lot of pages the last time, though.
So, there's the A?
Yes.
So, what are you doing? Are you doing any in the building?
We've got a tab to. On that road up there, the castle. Uh, we'll look at. See, what's the road going to be down on?
Right here, it's the end of that?
It has to be on that, oh, it, it's stats there, but it's probably on. It's got a frontage.
So, you're saying that up the street, you need to have a hundred foot?
Yeah. Which, how, how will tomorrow, if it can work or not? It, it may have to have a road rather than, you know, a driveway. Which, I'd probably do two, two lots.
Yeah.
Okay, and that fifth acre, I'll just put a road in and put, you know, twelve lots in. I know that probably doesn't sound good in these, in these times, up there, and around town, but it makes more sense. You know, plus we have. I need to think of sort of the type country we have.
Be a better procedure for this one. Figure it'd be a table.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do I take with me?
From my line?
And that's all?
At least, it's the same copies, yeah.
Okay. Any copy staying with you guys?
At least, um.
Just one? Thank you very much, all three of you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for getting us in and out of here, too. I appreciate it.
I don't know. I don't know what you need.
Oh, you got one. Thank you, thanks. See you guys, have a good night.
Next is Northwoods, we have Chuck Black.
Good evening, Chuck Black of Kendall Homes, and I'm the developer of the subdivision Northwoods. And, uh, I think we're probably here to discuss a couple of items. The roads are all complete up there, and I believe that the town's outside consultant, Fred Hamway, has inspected everything. He has reviewed all of the ASBIL plans done by, um, Duchamp's office, and submitted all of that to the town. And I did see, copied me an email, and I think Eric, Eric right?
From Fred Hamway?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, basically, I think the short version of Fred's email was that the plans are all acceptable, the roads are all acceptable, and he didn't conclude this way, but to me, the conclusion was, let's get them accepted as town roads. So, to me, that's very good news, and I think one or two meetings ago here, he had advised the board to reduce the bond, I think, down to ten percent from what it was originally. And I think the bond, the amount right now, was some eighty-two hundred dollars or so. And I think that he had recommended, and the board was in agreement at that time, that when the punchless was done, the ASBILs were done, he was fine with that, to release another, um, half of that money. And to, so in essence, to release some forty-one hundred dollars, and to retain forty-one hundred dollars while the roads go through the winter. So, I guess this one piece of business of the board is amenable to what was discussed in the past.
Right, so there's the issue of the four thousand that you were going to pay and move the sidewalk?
Yes, which I, woman's town planner had looked into and said, you know, geez, I think it's, uh, has not been paid and is due. And I've done a little bit of looking in my past records, but I haven't actually concluded that in fact we've never paid it. Uh, if we haven't paid it and it's due, then we'll have to take care of that.
Right, so.
And I don't recall in, when, in fact, the money is for to be paid. My recollection was it said prior to the roads being accepted.
It says the gift will be made at the time of the applicants' submittal for road acceptance. This is from the decision, so that's, that's it right there.
Okay, so.
And that would be the time, you know, at the time. Well, at the, submittal for road acceptance, which is what you're doing.
Basically, again, I don't recall, I've talked to this board, I've talked to the selectmen, I've talked to the town administrator, I don't actually know what the process is for road acceptance. I don't know who, who initiates that, which board. Somebody has to say, let's put it on the warrant.
The selectmen do that.
Okay. So, in theory.
They need us to say that we have approved, that you've done the roads, they've been built according to the plans, and we've approved it, so we can do that tonight.
Yep.
And that would give them the, you know, our approval for you to move forward.
Sure.
And for them to put it on the, the warrant. Okay. I know from. I know we have a placeholder there, but we're assuming you want to do it.
Definitely.
But I know, like, the town treasurer has looked, they haven't, they haven't found this money anywhere. So, you know, I. And since it says at the town road acceptance, I wouldn't, I don't know why you would have done it, so it makes sense that you haven't paid it, I guess. So, you know, in terms of asking for the four thousand two hundred, you know, that's almost equal to what you're going to pay for the, for the pedestrian mobility fund, so, you know, I don't think you want to, you know, give that money back due tonight. Because that's separate from the money, the four thousand two hundred will be held up for the winter, depending on the road.
Okay, and, and so I'm going to write a check to the town of Bolton to get it to the treasurer?
Mm-hmm. Okay, fine. But we could vote to, number one, approve, uh, or endorse the, the Hamways. You know, level to us, stating that the ASBILs have been, the roads have been constructed according, and the ASBILs are fine. So, to approve accepting the roads, and then to reduce the bond subject to, you know, you making that payment to the town.
There was one other fee I just wanted to bring to your attention, a road acceptance fee. I think that's something different, I don't know if that's been paid or not. Does that sound familiar?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how much it is here.
Well, I'm, I'm just referring back to an email that Jen had put together in August, and it kind of bullet pointed all the things that needed to be done to kind of finish up the project, and one of the things that she said is someone wrote acceptance fee of sixteen fifty or three dollars per linear foot, whichever is greater.
So, that needs to be calculated, I guess, by Ducharme and Dillis?
Again, one of the things I'm going to, I'll be asked somebody to research is.
Jen sent you that package, right? That said, this is what you have to do to get that.
Yeah, I don't believe that that, uh, fee was ever, uh, part of the subdivision approval, uh, et cetera. So, I think there has been debate in the town of different roads, et cetera. So, uh, if we're talking about sixteen hundred and fifty dollars, that's not too much to debate, if we're talking about a lot more than that, then there's nothing to debate.
Well, so, you know, you have two, these two issues, and it just makes it harder for us to vote to release the money, because they're outstanding, so I think, I think we could vote, you know, to accept the roads, but because, you know, you seem to have some doubt about these two payments, it needs to be resolved, and then we can, we can come back and we can, you know, vote to release that.
Yeah, I don't have, I'm not too concerned about the, you know, the idea of, I'll pay the sidewalk fee, uh, and then the bond can be reduced, you know, as far as road acceptance fees.
I found that it's under subdivision rules and regs in the appendix of the schedule. It's fifteen hundred dollars or three dollars per linear foot, whichever is greater. So, if your road's five hundred feet or less, then it's fifteen hundred, otherwise it's a mouth issue, whatever it is. I'll start out.
The fee schedule has changed since then? That might be a whole number.
Possible.
Yeah, road acceptance is sixteen fifty.
I'll ask Duchamp, so I can just look into that.
Okay. So, it looks like Kendall didn't have any, or not Kendall, um, Ken Hamway did not have any questions whatsoever. He says, reviewed plans and they're acceptable, so approve. So, I would make a motion that we vote to approve the ASBIL plans for all of these roads. I'm not going to list them, but one, two, three, four, five, six, six roads in the subdivision.
I think it's three, it's the three roads, the street acceptance.
Oh, okay, three street acceptance plans and three ASBIL plans, there you go. Sound like too many roads. And recommend to the selectmen that they, uh, put this on the warrant once all the fees have been properly accounted for.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against?
Okay, so you'll, um, get something to the selectmen, and I'll follow up on my end. And I don't know if I actually have to go see the selectmen, or that will just become a, a matter of business for them to put it on the warrant.
I can look into that and send you an email and let you know whether or not we do it or you do it.
Yeah, okay.
So, but just, just to clarify, you, in terms of the four thousand that, in the sidewalk, you're still investigating that, whether you made that payment?
I'll, I'll investigate that, it won't take me long, if it hasn't, if I don't show any evidence of payment, I'll pay it.
Okay.
The street acceptance payment, if it's sixteen fifty, I'm amenable to that. If it's any more than that, I'm not amenable to that.
Okay, so you'll communicate that to the town planner?
And as it is, I recently finished a road in another town, and the town, even if it wasn't accepted, said, we'll take care of the road this winter.
Which town?
A neighboring budding town. And here.
Can you give us a name?
Town of Berlin. And, and they didn't give me this stuff about, it's illegal, I can't do the road, I can't do this. They said, we'll take care of the road, Chuck, you finish it. They didn't make me some ASBIL plans, and they didn't make me put bounds in. So, here I'm going to, all this extra work and, and time, and tremendous expense, and I'm still up there plowing and sanding the road, when there's thirty-four residents paying taxes. So.
What, what's your point? That we're not Berlin? I mean, when you, when you bought the land and you filed the subdivision of Bolton, you knew what our bylaws were.
Yeah.
We didn't change them on you.
All right. And, so anyways, um.
We're getting to the end. It's real close, so it should be a happy time for all of us.
Well, again, the good news is you guys said, go out and finish the roads, we did it. We obviously did a great job.
Yep.
We're all set.
Yeah. Excellent.
And, so, uh, but it would be wonderful if, on an icy day, the town said, geez, let me let these trucks go through here, and salt and sand the roads. So, whether, I don't know the legality of it, I would, you know, so.
I, you know, we don't either. It's DPW and a selectman.
All right, so I'll look for your email, I'll follow up on my end, so that, um, next winter, the town will maintain the roads, and, very good.
I think there's one other issue, though, about stop signs.
Yeah, we put stop signs up.
Okay, because I talked to Police Chief Alpano, and he put that there was two that he recommended, and I.
And I believe we put them both up.
You did, okay. And that, and as well as the, thinking of the stop line, or was that happening?
I did not, I did not. My, again, my suggestion would be, next spring.
Yeah, okay.
Frankly, let the DPW go paint a line there. I think, I think Kendall Homes is gone above and beyond the call of duty, so, particularly considering our partner went bankrupt, and we had to foot the whole bill. So, thank, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
So, as far as the signing of the street acceptance plans and the ASBIL plans, I think they still need some additional copies, like one hour and five hours, I think, should we do that at the next meeting? Or when will that happen? When we get that fee, or?
So.
Because we just approved the plans, correct?
Yeah.
Probably once we get the fee, there's some subject to, so complete the subject to, and then we sign them.
Because I have some, like, tonight, like, we have the ASBIL plans, we can sign the ASBIL plans, and once I get the street acceptance plans.
No, let's do it all at once, and, and.
Okay.
Yeah. Be interesting to see what his response is to what his, uh, what Ducharme and Dillis tells him, because, you know, there's a fee to accept the road.
Right.
Yes, so, I mean, we definitely want to know what the, you know, how many feet, the calculation. Not that he's decided that he'd rather pay the fifteen hundred. I mean, we do need to sign them within a certain period of time from when they go to prove it.
I think we have twenty days, something like that?
Yeah, that sounds right, so.
So, that actually, is it before the next meeting, then? I don't know, it's not.
No, next week, so, two weeks. So, we'll wait. Um, so, Chief Alpano, it was only two stop signs, or?
There were two stop signs. Yeah, no, it was, I, I, that's why I called them.
It just says at certain intersections, right?
Yeah, that's why I called them verified, so it was, um, the major one was that Warner Road.
Sure.
So, that one was involved, and then there was another one within the subdivision, where I guess the road sort of, kind of, doesn't have key shape, it kind of falls into itself, they put one there.
So, Warner Road is the, at the end?
That's the entrance.
And there needs to be one there, so, thumbs up that it's there.
And then what was he saying about the lines at the intersection? Those two, two spots?
Yeah, so basically where you have a stop sign, you also need a stop, a painted stop line, um, and that has a good sign.
So, we're leading to David Lindsay to move on to, uh.
Some of ours and stuff.
Yeah, what are we doing, what else we can do, bang it all away?
This is, um.
I don't want to do it either. It's a weird feeling, isn't it?
This is the modified site plan for the common driveway on two eighty-three Long Hill Road, for Walter Erickson, unless he stays behind.
So, uh, you can refresh me why we're signing this now? Um, did we vote, did we vote on this last mass meeting?
I think you actually voted on this the meeting before that, or a meeting.
So, we had to wait the twenty-one days, right? Is that right, or no?
Well, I know they were in our last agenda for reducing their, or they wanted to set up a tri-party agreement for the, for the driveway.
Trying to remember what, I know we voted on, I think it was something about moving the swale, or there was, instead of a swell on each side, it was a swell on one side, and maybe moving the driveway, then knock down a big tree. That ring bells? Yeah. That was a long, long time ago, I feel like they were here, like you said, two meetings ago, the father and son, and we did vote to approve, and... I think the issue was the drainage.
It was supposed to be over here, but they couldn't, because they put a stone wall up in the meantime, so they moved it over here.
What was getting the town's approval to create a drainage swale on town land, I think that is. It might be that we approved it, and they just didn't have the bylaw to do it. David, were you taking notes that way?
I don't remember this at all. I remember a discussion a long time ago about a swale.
That was some, wasn't there some question about just charging about drainage onto the town road? That was the outstanding issue, so right here, getting Harold's approval, um, just. Trying to understand why we're signing it now, instead of when they already wrote us.
I don't see anything in our last, since September, anything about this.
So, sure, could you vote, vote that I sign this after Eric does some research and sends an email? Yeah, I think we're good to sign it, but I agree, it's kind of a little bit.
Okay, sure.
Since we're not, let's remember. So, yeah, let's, uh, make a motion that, that we have, John can sign this, once he just clears up, that there aren't any open issues on it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
And one of them, one of the other ones, just didn't have the signature block last time, right?
Yeah, actually, Ducharme and Dillis dropped off. I think this is Oak Trail. Two different A and Rs, and one of them they don't have, so, but we can sign this one. This is Oak Trail.
Oh, this is the one I was missing my line.
This is the one that was done in Bluey?
Yeah, they were all done in Bluey, so, do this back.
So, this is the one where it's combining two lots into one?
Mm-hmm.
And is this, is this near Northwoods?
No, the two lots into one was Ducharme's own house on Hartford Road, that's the other one.
Okay.
I don't remember this.
They were just adjusting the line.
Yeah, they were adjusting this.
Yeah, they were in common ownership.
Yeah, this is the one I'm watching.
And then I think one was the pool house in.
No, that was. No, that was pre-owned. No, no.
Yeah, that's Oak Trail, any E&amp;Rs at once.
Yep, so we signed it in blue.
Just put the line a little bit, so he could get the setback to his pool.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking the garage in.
Sorry, David.
But we signed this last time, but in blue, and it's registered. Oh, it's written except...
Heck, David signed it green, but it had blue. We were all happy with this one.
Well, this is a do-over. Actually, we're not voting again.
I just want to know if I just signed it.
Doug, this is signed on there. So what, James, is this your signature?
Looks like it.
Do you sign your own?
There's five on there. Yeah, five of that, yeah.
James, you were there. We're going to sign it table.
Using the autopen? There you go.
Sorry.
Who's dropping everything?
There is, but he didn't bring it in, so...
We can start working in the minutes?
Sure.
Got two left-handed, what are you working on?
Doug, can I have your name now? I mean, your name, so I didn't know if you wanted it. It's the Bee Gees newspaper.
I probably just came to wish that I was chairman of the past, but no.
You don't want it, so I just pass them.
Yeah.
Because I get one too, so I didn't know if you were wanting yours.
Never seen one before.
And then the other thing I also got in that mail was the ENF for the rail trail. There's only a hundred linear feet within Bolton. I didn't know if anyone wanted to take a look at it.
Yeah, sure.
Where is it? You're cool.
Yeah, it's a very tiny slipper.
Near Berlin. Or Clinton, right?
It's in a bunch of different houses. It's, um...
I'm just saying, what's that, what feet?
It's in Berlin, Bolton Hudson Stow, just like a ten-foot-wide rail trail.
Do we get an entry?
Hundred feet, it's nineteen hundred square feet in the town.
Do we have a map to show us where that hundred feet is?
It's probably on the CD.
Oh, God. I thought you had a map there.
No, I don't.
Where is it, do you know?
Um, I can send an email out. I saw it.
You know, I don't really know where it is. It's got to be right. It's got to be right. Here. See that, right there?
Yeah.
Does that sound like it's in Berlin?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, sure.
There's a road fact on it, yeah.
Is that intersection right where Beetle Bug is?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 there's tracks, sure. He's just talking about the tri-party here.
So there is a bit here about Walter Erickson. Maybe that'll jog your memory. This is on September eleven?
Sorry, last meeting, which was a month ago. I'm sorry. Oh, you know what it was? We asked him if he ever recorded it. And he said, "No, I haven't done that." And he said, "Well, you have to do that." So he was, that's why he sent us the bylaw. We approved it, but we never signed one.
Okay.
And we told him to record it. I do remember that.
So he can't record it until?
He can't record it until he has a signed plan from us.
Okay.
So I think we should go ahead and sign it. I do remember that.
So we voted?
There wasn't any change from the time that we voted to approve it when he brought it into us. He just had never recorded it. In order to record it, he had to, he had to, um, have a bylaw, which he didn't have with him at the time. Have a sign. It does...
It was a month ago. Yeah.
A lot's gone on.
So we can let's do it now.
Yeah? David, we put medical marijuana on tonight to give you an opportunity to have a final input. Did you watch our meeting from the last time?
Yes.
So you saw our discussion to where we, I think, seemed to have gotten to a point where we weren't comfortable moving forward with the bylaw at this point, and we were leaning towards just extending the moratorium as long as we could, which right now would be through the end of the year.
Do we know that for sure? I'm concerned that since we got approval for one moratorium, that the... I fully understand why it's very difficult for you to write a bylaw in the time since special town meeting. In other words, you weren't aiming for that at all until special town meeting. You get stranded on it in, you know, very initial discussion in November, and Christmas season comes and so forth. So I understand that. I'm not sure the Attorney General's office is going to understand that. They're going to say, you know, "You told us you were going to write one." They're going to think you have until maybe a month before town meeting. Frankly, I'm not so sure the deadlines we have are really necessary. I think the county administrators' first go-round with a town meeting warrant was a very difficult one, and, um, very, very pressed at the end, and he wants very much to avoid ever having that experience again, so he's established these very early deadlines. Nevertheless, the selectmen support him, and we're stuck with him. So I understand all that, but I worry that the Attorney General's office will not. Also, another problem with the extension through December is if we don't have a special town meeting, we have this gap between December thirty-first and town meeting in May, which I'm uncomfortable with. And even if we do have a special town meeting, you're not going to know about it until, like the last special town meeting, we didn't know about it until six weeks beforehand. Well, that won't give you enough time to write one either. So, one thought I had was the deadline for a citizens' petition article is not... Your deadline is what, mid-February, is that right, Arkin?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. And the deadline for a citizens' petition article is March thirty-first. We could write something, bearing in mind what you think is appropriate. Under the rules, you have to have a hearing on our citizens' petition. You could tell us what's wrong with it. And because we would want your support, we would amend it on the floor to be consistent with what you want. And that, that, that might make me feel a little more comfortable. I'm not saying for sure I can do that, that's the way to go. But it would, because I'm not sure, um, all of us who've been in the group would agree on something, but there's only ten signatures required on an annual town meeting citizens' petition, and I'm pretty confident I could round up ten signatures for, for something. So, that's why I don't want to give up tonight.
Why don't we just say, "I don't think time is really the issue."
Okay.
I think it's, it's just a difficult issue, and I know for myself that I've flip-flopped and been on both sides of it, and, you know, so... Some people can, you can be pro-business, but when it comes to like pointing on the map, you know, everybody has their sensitivities about where it's going to go. So there's no consensus about whether it should go in the, you know, back in the farm lots or in the commercial areas. I mean, I, I think, I think, you know, both are options that should be considered. I, you know, I think it's funny to say that it should be allowed, you know, in large farming parcels, but not in places, you know, a nice professional environment like Paragon, you know, the Paragon Building, which has a, you know, a gatehouse. I don't know if it's, has a guard in it now, but it's a very professional environment, and, you know, a good place for, you know, if you feel like this business should be supervised, that seems like a good place to put it. Or Bolton Office Park, you know? Rather than hiding it in the backwoods, you know, maybe it should be on Main Street, surrounded by, you know, other businesses, you know? That, that makes me feel, you know, if those businesses want to be next to them, and those landlords do, so... I just think where we are is we're falling, you know, where we are is falling back on the special permit process, which, you know, I think, you know, Doug's, Doug's idea of keeping it simple, that it's, what were your three things? It's by special permit, five hundred feet from a residence, and what was the...
And specifically, to me, the biggest thing that I feel would be important to do would be to specifically outline the areas that we believe should fall under the five-hundred-foot setback. The state law says schools, playgrounds, and places where children may congregate. But if you don't go any further than that, that's pretty vague. We have a lot of places where children may congregate in Bolton, and I think if we specifically outline those, such as scout camps, ballfields, baseball, soccer, lacrosse fields, basketball courts, golf courses, I don't know if you can include golf courses, but...
Libraries.
Libraries, churches.
One of our members has suggested conservation land.
Well, we talked about conservation land, and, you know, when you look at a map of conservation land, it's a lot of the town, which, you know, is nice. But that, that's, you know, that's, that's one of those issues. Is that, is that an area that would make logical sense to include? You certainly could make the argument. But the point is, you can't, we did a couple of scenarios with maps. Five hundred feet from a residence, for example, and then five hundred feet from a residence or a business, or any of these other places, including conservation land. All of a sudden, no land left.
Absolutely none?
Well, not, not none, but... So my only point there is, we, it will not pass if what we do is create a bylaw that surreptitiously makes it so that there's nowhere in Bolton.
Right.
Now, I still think that if you could do it even simpler, just say industrial and limited business, we don't have business, right? Industrial and limited business, and five hundred feet from residence, I think, you know, that would probably be the easiest, and put it in an area where it would go. I mean...
I know to Jonathan's point, though, there's such a difference between the cultivation and the dispensary.
But still, I don't, I don't think you want anything, and I know that Dave is saying that you're a fan of it, being a potential big farm, but I think if there's any extra traffic going down back roads, I just don't agree with, I think, whether it's cultivation, cultivate, it's not a farm. It's an industrial building. You don't want this, you know, in some scenic farm land.
So anyway, the point you make by this, just this quick little place that we got to, is that we haven't come to a consensus on grow versus retail, industrial versus agricultural. We haven't gotten to a consensus on that. I understand you feel strongly about that, but we haven't gotten to a consensus on that. And that would likely be, you know, an issue of some debate.
I would favor at this point, there are three possibilities. You can have just a dispensary with your growth facility, same organization, but with a growth facility in another town. I think that's pretty unlikely, that you would choose Bolton for your dispensary. And the most likely, I think, is you'd have the growth facility here in your dispensary in some other town like Bolton, or like Worcester. And the third possibility is you would have them both together as originally envisioned. And I think that's middle likely, if you will. But again, the most likely is, I think, just the growth facility. My initial thinking is I would write a bylaw that differentiated those three things. And a dispensary only I would allow in limited, in any of our business designations with the setbacks from places where children congregate. And let me detour here. I was reading a Concord bylaw, which I believe has passed muster with the Attorney General. They have three thousand feet from schools or libraries.
They do, yeah.
So I think we might be able to push that a little harder. Now, if three thousand feet from schools, libraries, playing fields, churches, et cetera, does produce zero, we'd sort of have to keep coming back until we produce some little amount of business area that would be acceptable. of business area that would, would be acceptable. Um, then I would have...
I think you, you, you're reaching where we reached, David, which is that this is complex. It's not an easy thing to just write a bylaw.
Well, let me give my whole scenario, because I, I may bring this as a citizens petition. Then I would regulate both the grow only and the combined, two parcels of, say, 25 acres with a 1,000-foot setback from the property edge. Uh, and I think that would give pretty reasonable protection to the, the, the people nearby. And since I think the odds are overwhelming, this would be a growth facility.
How many...
I don't think you're going to have that much extra traffic. You probably will have a great big truck bringing in some water once a week or something like that.
Well, you will have a lot of other negative in that. So, I mean, these, these, I mean, these will look like industrial operations. They're, they're big, probably big buildings. There, there'll be a lot of security. There'll be high fences because of them.
And I'm hoping that, that that will discourage them from building one.
So, and, but this, this is what bothers me about this. I think in a sense, it goes against the spirit of the zoning. And this is an industrial operation. It's not agricultural.
I agree.
It's a big building with a high fence around it and lights and security.
But we, we have people living near especially Cobham.
But they built...
And I don't think we can zone it just for Paragon and not for Cobham.
They either built or bought knowing it was next to industrial.
They didn't build or buy knowing it was next to a smelling marijuana plant.
Well, industrial's industrial. I mean, if it's residential, if it's a residential area, you can't all of a sudden put a high-security, you know, industrial business with chemicals coming in and out. I mean, I, I just, I don't...
If it's a 25-acre parcel and you got it from 1,000 feet...
Well, what if, what if it is your 25-acre parcel right next to that 25-acre parcel? All of a sudden, I, I just don't agree with it.
Well, Eric, I think it's important to be empathetic. So, you might, the idea of it in a field next to you, you have to understand that people who live next to industrial, that they might, might not like it.
So, both the ways, part of that's a...
Somebody's going to be next to it wherever it goes, right? The choice is between somebody who lives next to a farm, who subsequently gets one of these things, versus somebody who lives next to, uh, the, the industrial.
If you, yeah, if you live next to, if you live next to Cobham, you bought knowing, you know, when I bought in Bolton...
There was no medical marijuana law then. Like, no, no thought you bought into it.
If you, if you bought, if you bought a house and built a, built land and you said, well, I'm abutting industrial, you have to know what you're getting into.
No.
But at least you know it's next to an industrial use. You don't know it's marijuana, but...
Besides, I think far fewer people are going to be affected by putting it in the middle of a 25-acre farm than are going to be affected by putting it in Cobham. You've got all of Bolton Woods Way. A lot of people live there who are going to be affected if you put it in the Cobham.
Okay, so we've, you identify yourself, sir?
Yeah. Ted Kirchner, Piddlehole. I, I don't want to get into the weeds and design this, but I just want to bring, bring to your attention, in the CFR, CMR, excuse me, 105 CMR 725 point, I don't know, 100 or something, a lot of definitions. And the word dispensary seems to be a umbrella word that is covering about everything in just one short sentence. Unless otherwise specified, registered marijuana dispensary refers to the sites of dispensing cultivation and preparation of marijuana. So if the state kind of looks at that as one, one entity, I don't know that we can separate it and say, well, we're going to treat this this way, this way, this way. And, and we can't answer it tonight, but I just want to bring your attention to that definition. And then secondly, when you have an operation that has odors, and, and when we met with Cottons and Carp here on September 11th, 2013, who are proponents and wanting to put this in really best light, they said, this has odor. I have experience in living in Delaware, a half hour, half mile from the Pennsylvania border and maybe two, three miles across that border mushroom farms. And you smell mushroom farms when the wind direction was coming our way. And the odors do not respect setbacks or anything like that. So when we write it, I, I don't know that we can separate out, well, we'll take a quaint little store selling things, but we don't want the cultivation, which is industrial, big-time industrial, and 24/7. And if there are odors downwind, I, you know, they're not going upwind, they're going downwind. And they're going to go until the odor gets below the odor threshold. The chemicals are still there, but the odor threshold is...
I'm not sure how detailed you could, by law, I don't know if you could put something in about odor, you know? But I know that, that the solar panel place in, uh, Devon's had a lot of noise. And I don't know if they added bylaws for noise, like decibel levels. I don't know if there's a, some type of odor level you can add to a, to a bylaw.
Oderama.
Avoiding odors and unnecessary nuisance noise, even with a special permit.
Because, yeah. I mean, that may just require some type of filter. I don't know. That you, I don't know. Who knows?
But is the most important thing that we don't go past spring town meeting without, without saying, you know, it's, you have to go through the special permit process? Is that important, Doug and David?
I think...
Important to say that, or is that just...
I think it's the strongest thing we have in our bylaws, that, that something that is allowable, that needs to be permitted, that's the most rigorous permitting process we can put them.
Yeah, I definitely agree.
So if all we said was, you must go through the special permit process, we've made a, we've, we've made a level of review at the highest level that we can do it. And, and so that would be the one thing that to me would be absolutely uncontroversial. Um, you know, we do it with most other things that we care about in town, so why would we not want to do it with this?
So that, that seems important to me.
That's specifying that this is nothing to do with right to farm as well.
With that protection in hand, I think we'd probably use the next whatever, six months, 12 months.
And, and as I said, as I said...
Talk about industrial.
If you're going to do, if you're going to do a simple, simple bylaw like that, then I would also say, let's explicitly list the parcels that we consider places where children are likely, you know, that I just mentioned. Let's, let's be more explicit about that. And then the third level would be to, to extend the 500-foot setback from just schools, playgrounds and places where children congregate to...
To those.
Maybe residences. I mean, I, I think that would be a way to protect at a level of protection through, you know, everyone's residence in Bolton. Beyond that, I mean, the level that you're talking about getting into, you know, three different scenarios and this and that, that's going to be fairly complicated. And, and I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but I, I...
So you're saying you would submit something that had site review, list the specific places? Could we get 3,000, um, 3,000 feet for schools and libraries?
I'd recommend that. I like that. And it passed Musker, aging, Cobham.
I mean, again, we have to do the GIS maps.
And maybe 500, 500 feet from all the other things.
So Doug's been looking at the maps that were done.
Here's 750 feet from every residence. So white is, is areas that don't fall...
Thousand, one thousand.
And, and, you know, this is a big conservation piece. So they end up being, you know, the big parcels that are left in town. There's not too much else. So...
That's the 500-foot area.
That's 750 feet. Um, 500 feet is, is, uh, this one. So it's not a huge difference. You know, 500 feet protects a lot of the town.
But doesn't this in effect push it back into the farm, into the open? Isn't it, in effect, have that...
Well, you do still have some land that's own business that would be beyond this 500 foot. So if you, if you take this, if you take this 500 foot and then overlay it with, with our business zone, you know, you've got industrial up here. You've got, I would say the limited business here is completely covered. In the center of town, we have limited business here. So there's some, there's some land in limited business there. Over here is the school. So you wouldn't want to do that one there. The recreation district. So it doesn't completely, I mean, I, at the end of the day, you know, we've got one, two, three, four business districts, um, essentially, one of which is right next to our high school.
I mean, I'm not sure this is even the right thing from the standpoint of security. These things are going to, we know that there's going to be a, we know there's public safety concerns about this, about these things just because of the, the value of the products that they've got stored there. You know, having these things way in the back, far from the, from the highway where the cars can safely get there.
What would be a big car near the police station?
I just don't see where you're smart.
I just don't see how you, I don't see how you can do that.
It's important for us to say where it can be.
So, but in a sense, I think that's going in the wrong direction. You know, saying it's going to be as far as possible from all these places, which pushes it back into these more remote areas of town. I think it's the opposite direction.
No, but Doug's saying it's kind of equal. They're like, they're back country sites and they're, they're Main Street businesses.
So I think whatever we come up with, we actually want to encourage it to be, one of, I think, one of the things we want to do is encourage it to be accessible to law enforcement. And that's got to be a priority. These, these things are, you know, a magnet for crime. Um, so law enforcement, you've got to be able to get to it to, you know, if there's a call and not have it be 20 minutes away.
Nothing's 20 minutes away from...
Wow, I don't know. Okay. He was 10 minutes away. I don't know.
I agree. I am 10 minutes away from the other end of town.
What you will, what will we get from that?
What, what Eric and Jim are missing is if we have this restriction that forces them into the back, the odds of one being built decline dramatically.
Well, you know, I don't know if I agree with that.
Well, yes, because what you're going to want to do is have the, the guys who were in here wanted to lease something. You know, Cobham and Paragon as if, if they have to build something from scratch, I, I think the odds are much lower.
The odds are already there, David. That's what you're missing. You know, the, the horse is out of the barn. They went to the towns that wanted them. We don't want them. They know that. They're not here.
Well, but there's a second, there's a second round comment.
I know, but they're not going to comfortable, they know we don't want.
And someday there's, there's recreational comments and, uh...
That you can't stop. I mean, that's just, you know, you have to keep it really simple.
But, but the base, as we've seen in Colorado, the base is the medical guys are the ones who are the recreational guys now. So, so, um, I, I think trying to make it as unlikely as possible would be the thing. And I think it's a lot less likely that somebody's going to want to put something in the middle of nowhere than it is that they're going to want to put it in Cobham or, or Paragon.
But if we're looking ahead to recreational use, the, you know, where these businesses see the future of Bolton maybe is a growing site. Now, I don't think we're ever going to be a place where you'd want to locate a lot of recreational dispensaries. There's probably, you know, for the same reason, they don't get that much traffic. But there's a lot of land. We could certainly grow the stuff. So we may become a target for these grow offices.
But again, that, what the ideal growing place is an old industrial building. Like, I think it was Winchentown that, that had this empty old industrial building and they were delighted to. And, and so I think our biggest risk is somebody putting a growth facility in Cobham or Paragon, and especially in Cobham, because I think that would really...
So Cobham is very close to Bolton Woods Way.
Yeah. Well, if you put a 500-foot, if you put a 500-foot restriction of residents, then Cobham...
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the area, it completely, would completely...
Yeah, it's done. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it does leave some space in Paragon on the backside.
So if there is a planning board majority for site review...
Special permits.
Yeah.
Which includes site review.
Right, yeah. The, um, 3,000-foot setback from schools, libraries...
Well, that has to be modeled.
Yeah. But, but it worked in Concord.
No, modeled on the map, just that it doesn't eliminate.
Yeah, right. And I would like to include playing fields. I think if, if...
I agree. That's part of, yeah.
That was on my list.
Yeah. But playing fields, try for the 3,000. Now, maybe that eliminates it.
That's too much.
Well, no. I mean, if, if, if they allowed Concord to have 3,000 from schools and libraries, playing fields...
Paragon has a soccer field, don't they?
But I think for Delaware, there have to be like an equal number of business sites and, you know, backland sites, you know, for this to work.
Well, could we model, model the 3,000 with the playing fields and then, I don't know.
So that's Forbush Road. It's Bolton Office Park, the old...
The lacrosse field.
The lacrosse right up on the road that blows out.
And Memorial.
That blows out all of 495.
And Memorial.
The parcels around 495, the, you know, lacrosse field, right?
I really don't understand your point of, you know, equal backlogs, equal industrial. I mean, it's residential. Residential is residential.
No, that's your point of view because you live in the country. But, you know, some people live next to business and they never expected medical marijuana.
The problem though is near an opening. So, you know, I'm not thinking about me personally.
I'm not thinking about me personally, but there's a back, yeah, not in terms of business, but farmland. There's like a, a big field up behind me.
Yeah. I live right across the street from a big farm area.
Sir, can you identify yourself?
Is there a way that we can get a copy of Concord's map similar to the 500 and 750-foot blankout that, that Doug talked about?
Can you identify yourself, sir?
I'm sorry, Gilbert Burns Sugar Road. Sorry.
Um, I mean, we're pretty busy, but you know, if you as a, as a, you know, a group want to do that.
What's it called?
Um, it's GIS. And every town has a G, should have a GIS system. So you might be able to go in there and ask for them.
You might just, yeah, go to town hall in, in Concord. If the bylaw has passed and been approved, there's probably something on record there that would show them out.
Yes. If I can get one, I'll give it to you. Because if, if their 3,000 turns all pink, if that's the good color, then...
Well, also how big is their town square, uh, square mile wise relative to Bolton? If they're, you know, two or three times our size, then maybe they have more space to play with there.
Sure. I mean, basically, they, they, you know, from what I read, they're trying to get their facilities to be near the hospital on Route 2. And there are all sorts of clinics and doctors' offices.
Right.
So, you know, what's, what's similar to that in Bolton?
So there's a, you know, if you just did the schools, which if they did it, we could probably do it. And we really only have two school locations.
They did schools and libraries.
Okay. And we have, did plank one library.
I heard you did with 3,000 feet of the schools.
So if you did a 3,000-foot circle around those, you know, you, you'd block out, you know, like something like that and something like that. If you added all the playing fields, you start filling in the, filling in the town.
So you...
And I think there's a fundamental difference here between what you would like and what I think is appropriate myself, which is to create a bylaw that appropriately establishes a way for, for Bolton as a town to have local control, to evaluate proposals and to make sure that whatever it, if and when it ever did approve something, it was something that was appropriate for Bolton, it was in a location that was acceptable. You know, your goal, I think you've been clear, is to try and figure out a way to prevent it. And if that's the case, and, and we come up with a bylaw that does fill in the map, I don't think that'll pass.
Yeah, I understand. I, I definitely...
And I don't think we can do that as a way.
I definitely understand there has to be a possibility of it coming in to get it approved by the AG. So maybe the 3,000 would just apply to schools and libraries. And could we push a little bit with maybe 750 on the playing fields and then 500 on the residences and businesses?
So here's, here's where I think we are, and I'll speak for myself. Everyone else can speak. Um, I think we're at a point where this planning board is not, you know, going to bring something forward. So I think it is in the hands of the, the citizens petition. And we're trying to give you our best input. I would certainly support, uh, special permit, defining, uh, places where children congregate, 3,000 feet for schools. Um, I would support 500 feet for residences. Beyond that, I don't know, you know, consensus.
I would support doing that and leaving it at that for now.
That's pretty convincing.
And continuing the conversation.
That is, it is.
If they could create some helpful structure, rather than A, be naked, and B, having a moratorium. Just for the interim, but you need to think, needs to be a path towards something.
Could the bylaw also have something that's saying in the event of, of disapproval, uh, the moratorium is extended until the next town meeting? That, that would put the onus on the AG. You know, jeez, if you're going to disapprove what we say, you ought to let us have.
You know, you probably know better than we do. There's probably a way to do that, but I don't know how to do that.
I would disagree with Doug. I mean, I, I think maybe there is a consensus about, you know, among the board about a very simple, you know, simple proposal, um, you know, whether... very simple, you know, simple proposal, um, you know, whether, whether, you know, we look at the maps and, you know, 3,000 feet's gonna work, I think that's probably going a little too far. I, I think, you know, this map, which shows the 500 feet, is, you know, probably the most reasonable. Um, and, you know, it's just going back and relying on the special permit process. Uh, it's, it's not a moratorium, a permanent moratorium, but you, I think if you take this on, you're gonna be bickering the way, you know, not, not serious bickering, but just back and forth. And it's, you're either gonna not come up with something, or it's gonna be a novel.
I'm not averse to writing a novel, but I, I don't wanna write a novel if there's no chance of it, so.
I mean, if your, if your biggest concern is going into the fall without a, you know, a town meeting and there's no special permit process, I, I think that's the biggest concern.
I think if we, if we, whatever we do, if we try to come up with some criteria, I think we should try to think of, if we had to have a marijuana grow facility, where would we want it to be?
Well, I, I think John's addition saying, you know, saying that, uh, growing marijuana is not agriculture, it is, it's kind of a laboratory-based activity, I think that would, you know, so it doesn't have the rights that, you know, the right to farm, the right to farm freedom.
One of the proposed bylaws, the very first thing in it is, uh, medical marijuana is not a right to farm, um, use.
Mm-hmm. So that, that's in the state?
That's, no, that's in one of the proposals.
Okay.
I don't know if it's been approved by the state, but what I, I think it might have been Norwell. The very first thing is, medical marijuana is not a right to farm use.
So that's what I would just add to Doug's work.
And also, it is not a home occupation, which I might not like.
What's, what's, can citizens' petition change any bylaw?
They can try.
But just, can you imagine this discussion at town?
I'm just, no, no, I'm just saying.
It would just be so miserable.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking that, I'm asking...
It would go for days.
Do citizens, can any citizen petition, petition change like, any bylaw? Or does it have to be approved by the planning board, or?
Citizens' petition could come up and say, let's abolish the planning board, selectmen and all the rest of them too. It's within the rights of the citizens, because we constitute the, you know, the basis of the town.
But you get to give an opinion on it on town.
Right, okay, yeah, you get to say...
And anything that's passed at town meeting still has to be approved by the attorney general. So if, if a citizens' petition was passed at town meeting, that, let's say that...
We ban it.
Banning this, you know, the attorney general would strike it down and say that bylaw is not acceptable because it doesn't correlate with the state law.
And then you're open, if that happens.
So how are we, if we don't do anything, doesn't our special permit process still apply or not?
No, well, the question is, how much strength does it have?
So only state law?
So your current...
So, so it probably would, because any facility that came in that needed to get permitted would have to have a facility and have a permit, and they would either need to go through the selectmen or the planning board. So it's likely that it would trigger our, our special permitting process anyway, but if we explicitly put it in there, there's no gray area.
So, but without the special permit as a requirement, you know, there could be a proposal that went to the selectmen and the selectmen could vote to approve it, and so it wouldn't go through the whole design review process.
If, let's say, if for example, they were moving into an existing building, um, well, if they were moving into an existing building like Skinner that's in a limited business area, they would need a limited business special permit, and they'd still have, they would still trigger the special permit.
But not because it's residential.
Or if it was in an agricultural...
But if it was in a business...
They'd just found the old barn somewhere.
You know, there's some gray area.
See, see, the only things that are allowed as a right are things that are in our bylaws that say you can do this. So, so anything that is requesting a permit to do business is going to ultimately trigger site review and special permit.
And if the town of Norwell is coming up and saying, number one, it's not right to farm, well, then there is some ambiguity as to whether or not it is right to farm. So somebody will make that claim, and if this common law law is a whopping one year old...
See, we, we think that a year from now, there're gonna be a lot of bylaws written, and there's gonna be a lot more knowledge about what makes sense.
And I'm happy to have ours rewritten in the light of that, I just don't wanna go naked.
So why not do what you said, you do a simple three bullet point, here you go. Bullet point one is special permit, and you add some setbacks, we continue our research and debate after that.
Well, that to me, that, that to me is what I, that's the only thing I'd be comfortable with doing. Very simple, special permit, 500 feet to residential, 300 feet to schools, 3,000 feet to schools and libraries, and list the facilities that children are likely to congregate at that would be, fall under the setbacks.
How, how powerful can a special permit be? I mean, can it be tougher on this marijuana issue than it's been on anything else? Do you have carte blanche to set the special permitting process as broad as you want?
Well, if you read the criteria that we have in our special permit, it's, it's very broad, and there's everything from noise to smell to sight to disturbance of neighbors to, we don't like the way your building looks, to, you know, there's a lot of, it is very broad.
That said, could an applicant come to the planning board and saying, this is egregious owning, you, you guys are putting me through the ring of far more than another applicant for a different use? Anybody can put together a lawsuit for anything, you know?
Sure, but that permit did pass, you know, the special permit passed. Um, you know, when we wrote it, we were a little bit concerned that it might not pass because it was so broad and, and not really very specific, pretty open-ended to the interpretation of the boards.
But you can't use it to exclude the process of the medical marijuana, because the state would kill you.
We can't, we cannot say to somebody, you can't bring something forward and, and apply for a special permit. What we can do is, in the process of reviewing it, use the special permit to process to determine whether or not that application was appropriate and should be, should be permitted, and the, and the board could vote not to permit it by virtue of saying, after reviewing this application through the special permitting process, we have determined that this is, this is not, you know, acceptable and appropriate as presented for, for Bolton. Now, they, as Dave just said, that would be the absolute situation, that if somebody was really adamant and wanted to fight it, they could take that decision and, and appeal it to court and, and, you know, see where it would go. Obviously, the town has, town has the ability to put up a roadblock by virtue of a vote at the board.
Okay, thank you.
And it is two boards, because the special permit process is with the planning board, but site plan review does exclude the, the selectmen, so they have to sign off too. So at the end of the day, it's both boards have to sign off.
Good.
Um, I, I like what Doug says, and if that's what the planning board offered, I think that would be a, a good initial step. I hope if, at some point after that, we wanted to oppose, propose an amendment on town meeting floor, maybe a slight change to the setbacks, that you would not take personal offense at that.
At this, at this town meeting coming up?
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't get anywhere. Well, but either, I suppose.
See, see, what I would want from your group is support.
Okay, without, without any...
That's what we'd be looking for. You know, that we don't, we're not getting to town meeting, Doug's making this, you know, his presentation, and then it just turns into, you know, a circus, so...
I, I can't, I can only guarantee myself.
Well, you're, you're the leader.
Well, I have an army of cats, believe me. Frankly, I think most of the people who were actively involved really, really wanna ban it, and, and I...
And you can't do that.
Well, and, but, but they haven't, some of them haven't been convinced yet. Um, so, so, assuming I, I'd like to see the, the final written thing, but assuming it's as you're discussing, I think, yes, I could support it, um, but I can't guarantee that everyone who was involved in the moratorium method would support it, but I, I would probably speak in favor of it. The one thing that, that I would want, though, uh, is the, the protection of going back to an, a renewed moratorium in the event that Doug...
Well, can you look into that?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause, I mean, I, I think that's fine. I, I don't know the mechanism to do it. I remember having multiple votes at a town meeting, if one didn't pass, and then we'd go to the other, but in terms of having some sort of a criteria written into it, that in the event the attorney general doesn't pass it, I'm not, I have no idea how to do that. I would probably either way, and if you could tell us that.
Or if the town doesn't approve it.
Yeah, it's your concern, is the town doesn't approve it or the AG doesn't stand for that?
My, my concern is if the AG doesn't approve it.
I'm, I feel pretty strongly, but those three bullet points, the AG would approve. Based on other towns, Dennis, Norwell, Concord, who have done more robust bylaws than that, they've set out those criteria.
Did Concord do setbacks in specific zones?
So did Dennis and so did Norwell.
But I'm saying, they, but did Concord do residential or did it say setbacks from industrial or medical?
So I don't remember. But all of these towns did special permit.
Has any town, has any town allowed it, allowed it in residential?
That's what I'd be interested to know.
I don't know.
Or they all say industrial and setbacks?
Most say that. I don't know the answer to your question, but most, most, the first thing they do is say it's not allowed.
Cause I understand what you're trying to do, Dave, but it's kind of gambling. What if somebody does decide, yeah, we'll build a building here, I mean, you're trying to, you're, you're banking that they're not gonna wanna do it.
I'm not banking on that. I mean, if, if it does happen, I would rather have it there than in Cobham. Probably, I would rather have it there than in Skinner or, I'm sure I'd rather have it there than in Skinner, and I'd probably rather have it there than in Paragon, although I think Paragon is kind of a close call.
I mean, I don't know, I guess we could fight on that.
Yeah, right. So, so you're thinking you, you might try for that kind of a bylaw?
What, do we wanna vote on kind of a...
I'm concerned about setback. I support a bylaw that requires a special permit, but I think it's completely, having about, deciding at the outset that distance from the school is the main thing, I think is the wrong way of looking at it. I actually don't think that's true. I mean, I think there are, there are other concerns than just the proximity to school, public safety, odas, there are much more important things than whether it's 2,000 or 3,000 feet from the school. I don't think the kids are gonna be contaminated either way.
What do you think about a 500 feet from any stone wall?
Sorry?
500 feet from any stone wall?
I mean, it's arbitrary, right? We just say, it's gotta be a certain distance from the school, but it's, it's just arbitrary. It doesn't, I think we should look at the things that really matter, the things we know about, that, you know, which are odor, public safety, um, those are the things that we know matter. I don't think it matters whether it's 3,000 feet or 1,000 feet from the school.
But then we'd be like picking parcels.
So let's, let's not do that, let's just require, let's do what we can all agree on, which is that it should go through the special permit process. Now, at least we, we make sure that if we get, and, and if, if there's any proposal, you know, that's the minimums there, if there's any proposal that comes to us, you know, after that, we're guaranteed that it will have to go through a special permit, and then we'll have a chance to strengthen the bylaw in the future when we get more other bylaws to look at and get more, more agreement.
Basically, what you're saying is, from where we are now, any incremental regulations is a good thing.
Well, we all agree that...
All the ones we agree on now, don't let the 500 feet, so neither good.
Yeah, yeah, we all agree that's good, and then get, let's get that in place, and then we can take the next step after that.
I don't think we could support that now. I think there has to be some, some of the setbacks Doug suggested. So, if you brought what Jim is suggesting, I think we would try to amend it. If because we're not gonna support it, you don't bring anything, I guess we'd rather go the citizens' petition route and try to do what Doug has suggested and hopefully get a majority support, uh, when you guys come to settle it. In fact, we'd probably change it to get a majority.
Yeah, so I'd just like to hear from the rest of the board. So James has been very clear, um, so if everyone can kinda go around, we don't need to take a vote, but we can just kind of lay out, you know, how we feel about, you know, what Doug, what we've been discussing.
We could do a vote, too. I'm leaning towards the opinion that anything on town floor, in town, historically speaking, is tough to get passed, especially if it's got a lot of noise to it, or even a moderate amount of noise to it. I think the overriding conclusion I've heard from everybody on the panel is, uh, simple is best, and it, it's probably a good idea to get some protection in place. If the simplest that we can agree on is special permit, I think we should do that. I think if the board can come to agreement on some setbacks, whether it's one or two, I think that's a good idea. I think staying naked and letting the moratorium run out and not having some sort of a bylaw drafted is a bad idea. So if I'm, I think if we can just boil it down and come up with maybe a couple of setbacks, what, what's most important and where do we really wanna keep it away from, whether that's simply other abutters at 500 feet, uh, plus special permit process, then we should do that. And I think the town would support something like that. It's a pretty simple case to make. We're naked today, we wanna, we wanna change that and have it go through.
No, we have a, we have a more...
You're right. We will be naked if we pass through this town meeting, right, and we don't do anything. And if we can put together an arduous process, I shouldn't say arduous, a very detailed process like our special permit process, if we can make that apply to this, then I think that that's a win.
Eric? I think, I definitely agree on, you know, having the, the approval of the boards. I think, though, it shouldn't be in residential, so I think we should have maybe a 500 setback, industrial, limited business, and the approval of planning board and selectmen, which I think it should be.
I'm actually wondering why we put K2 trap approach to it. We have the official planning board, which is just the, you know, very stripped down thing that we can all agree on, special permit, not right to farm, you know, just the very basic elements, and then leave it to David's group for more of the, you know, extra stuff. So we have our base protection and then, you know, the, the super duper undercoating that will run you only $500 on this beautiful new car.
But if you leave it to David's group, you're gonna, number one, you're gonna end up with a, a very long town meeting, debating amendments, and number two, you're going to, you know, you're giving them the, the, you're giving them the charge to come up with what they want, what they want is the most restrictive possible, so, you know, that's, that's where we're at. You know, we can, we can do something, or we can leave it to them.
I think either way, the town meeting's gonna increase in length because, because of the topic, no matter who does what, but I do see your point on the second.
David?
I don't think we're going to be as organized and unified as Doug's comments imply. So, I, I hope we can reach a majority that would wanna do close to what, what Doug says, and that I at least, and perhaps a few others could support it, and that would be enough between your support and those of us who would go along with you. And I think you're still gonna have to deal with some amendments from others who are of the belief that there is a way to stop this, but I think you'd have enough votes to defeat those, those attempts. I, I don't think there's any way I can guarantee that there won't be some attempts to strengthen it, even though, assuming it's written pretty much the way Doug has described it, I wouldn't be one of those, I would not be speaking on, on the pro side.
You know, so, you know, Doug, I support, you know, what you've put forward, you know, with John's piece about right to farm, you know, I think, I think the 500 foot setback is enough, if you consider all the sites, there are a lot of overlaps between residential, playing fields, schools, libraries, I think 3,000 is just getting into, that's another town... I think 3,000 is just getting into, that's another town and, you know, we're not Concord. So I think just keeping it pretty simple.
Are we talking about 500 feet from any residence?
500 feet from residences, schools, playing fields. I mean, isn't that what was modeled? Is that the way?
Yeah.
But not, yeah. So, you know, that seemed like a good map to me, you know, that GIS map with the 500 feet had seemed to offer, you know.
So you know, the state law says 500-foot setbacks to schools, playgrounds, and places where children congregate. It doesn't mention residences. So the one thing I was saying, you know, there's a lot of places involved, and they're pretty obvious, like Boy Scout camps, pretty obvious places where children congregate, but we should probably be explicit about that. So that would really be just further defining the state law. So the, seems like the one issue that we're still debating is the 500 feet to residences and whether or not we did anything else.
Don't children congregate in houses? That's a good point.
I think they're driven on their roads and cars.
That would be pretty hard to defend, I think. I think you have to be explicit about the 500 foot from residences. I don't think you can afterwards during the cycle process.
The interesting thing to me is that if you write down the 500-foot setbacks, including residents, and you do your special permitting process, I mean, once you get to your special permitting process, you can change that, can't you?
Not if it's a bylaw.
Change it in the sense of making it more strict?
Or modifying it to make it more strict or?
You couldn't waive it.
Okay.
If it's a bylaw, you cannot waive it.
Got it.
But you could, in a special permit decision, you could come to an agreement with the applicant that we're actually going to have a 750-foot setback. You could, you could, through the permitting process, make it more stringent, but you could not waive it.
Could you add residential in the permitting process if you didn't?
You could, but I think that'd be difficult.
Maybe you can.
So I think everyone has to agree that, or, you know, a number of people have to agree that it's not likely to happen, but this isn't 100% moratorium. And, you know, feel comfortable with that. But this absolute thing, it's just, you know, you want to live in Russia, I guess, or something where, you know, things can happen that way, but.
None of the bylaws contain, I mean, odor is one thing I'm very concerned about. There's none of the bylaws contain, I mean, presumably there's an active chemical that you.
That's in the special permit process is smells.
And is it quantifiable? Can you, you say no more than three parts per million. I mean, certainly in other industrial processes, you have this, right? You know, no more than three parts per million sulfur dioxide emissions. I mean, you know, at the stack.
Yeah, so they have to put scrubbers on their exhaust, things like that.
Right. So what we could, could we impose a pretty stringent limit on that? I mean, you can impose a limit on those kind of things, which A, guarantee that if the odor situation is controllable, and maybe B, make it pretty economically unattractive. So then, you know, so it's a double win. I mean, we win from the standpoint that we protect the neighbors from the smell, but we also.
You want 100%.
It's not a 100%.
You're getting into the weeds, I think.
It's not necessarily 100%.
You just pull us into the ditch.
Maybe that's more in the future than now. But I do wonder if in the future, we might have more, might be more tools as other, we say other communities perhaps draft bylaws in creative ways to discourage the things we don't want, which is a smelly, growing facility, at least for me.
I mean, I think the smell is just like a convenient evil to like jump on. I mean, I think there are worse things than that.
Well, the smell and the public safety.
Smell and mushrooms, Dave. No, I can smell my neighbor's setback system. They have a big candy cane, you know, a big pipe, I can smell that and just, what can you do?
Store or produce any product which might be noxious, pungent, or create ugly refuse.
Pungent, is it?
You have to trust in the special permit process, which is something that I think Larry Delaney's been saying from the beginning. You have to feel comfortable with it. And this comes up a lot with the planning board, is feeling comfortable with the decisions and the process that we'll go through if it happens.
Well, I am, what is the deadline for?
Well, for the articles, technically I need them in by the 22nd, because that's when I need to post in the newspapers.
So it's still technically a draft, though, because it could change after the hearing, right? It could be.
We could make some changes, yeah. But the 22nd is when we meet next, right?
February 13th is when I need the final final.
Is it, that's before the hearing, though? What if something comes up at the public hearing that you want to add?
We had that happen, we have to do an amendment on the floor.
Shouldn't the public hearing be before?
But we weren't, the barn preservation bylaw, we weren't allowed to add a piece that seemed to be part of it.
We tried.
We have to do that this time.
So I will write up this very simple thing for the next meeting, and then we can decide if we want to put it forward. I guess that's it. That's when we have this.
And you'll probably have the GGIS maps done to show what you showed.
I don't.
We send copies of those to.
So what we.
Do you think the one you've done already is?
Would you rather simplify?
Yeah, the only thing I don't have that we discussed was 3,000 feet. And I don't see any need to do that. I can do 3,000 around the schools and, you know, that, I wouldn't extend it to anything other than the schools, and it doesn't sound like we have consensus to even do that. I mean, if you look at the 500-foot to residence, you know, the school is, you know, right here. So that probably is 3,000. 3,000 feet is about an inch, so you've already got a 3,000 foot around that school and this school, you know, you've got this land over here that might fall under 3,000 feet, which is the landlocked land on the other side of 495, so I don't know that. I kind of agree with James that it's a bit arbitrary, and I'm not sure what more we're gaining with the 3,000 feet. If we go the 500-foot route, including all residences and anything else we can trust, you know, this is your map, and the white areas are the only areas that it's allowed. So.
I like the southern fishing. I'm sure I'd like the 3,000, but I know you've got to reach your consensus, so I.
Yeah, so, you know.
I think Sturman's is adding residential, that's the big deal.
Yeah, it is. It's either, it's either adding residential to 500 or banning residential.
Yeah, are you talking about 500-foot setbacks for residential or not allowing it in residential?
For, not allowing it in residential on 500 feet of a house.
Right, right. And that's what we've been talking about with those maps. Because we had the initial discussion that maybe it might be appropriate on a big farm somewhere down the road. So that's where we've gotten to at this point. I'll write it up, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
And I will look into that question about.
Can I stand in the moratorium?
One question. In town meeting before, we must have had the situation where we're trying to, we're constrained by the Attorney General, right? Where sort of the town wants to, the meeting wants to take it farther than the Attorney General will allow. Has it, has the discussion been disciplined in that case? Has sort of, have people understood the legal constraints?
I don't think in the period after that involved, it's ever been an issue.
So that's going to be a real.
We did at our last town meeting, you know, our town council did speak to the issue of, you cannot ban this. At town meeting, he spoke to that issue.
Yeah, but it didn't stop every person from coming up and saying why it should be banned. No. That's, when we presented, we should say, you can't ban it. And don't.
And you can't, and you can't set a set of conditions that over-constrain it so that it is effectively banned either, right? I mean, that's going to be.
The discussion was cut short, though.
It's because it was really a very simple question, and it was just a whole lot of extraneous noise that didn't really bear to, do we want a moratorium or not?
Oh, I'm sure with every one of those points, yeah.
I mean, I know, I know there are people who want, they want to include the conservation land, and I was probably one of them, but that just eliminates every site. Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Very good discussion.
Did we look at that? The central field. There was no map. But did you see where it is?
Where is it?
It's in the absolute southern corner, where there's a corner of, if you've ever been over there, which is over near my house.
So it's on.
South of Bolton Road and old Central in Hudson, where the beetle bug, the Volkswagen repair shop is, that guy, his land is actually mostly in Bolton. And it's right at that intersection where the.
Oh, you know what? I didn't do it.
Where the railroad goes through.
It's a little west of the mountain Delaney Road that's in Bolton.
So did they want us to do anything about that?
No, I just had gotten it in the mail and I thought that.
So are they proposing? What are they proposing to turn it into a bike path?
Into a rail trail, so it's like a 10-foot wide page path that you can bike, walk, run.
And so it connects to.
There's one, there's one in Hudson right now, and it goes Hudson to Marlboro.
They're all over the place, yeah.
That's the one that goes to Clinton, where there used to be like a bridge. I heard they even wanted to put that back up or something.
But Berlin had been against it initially, so.
So are they asking for support or?
Not at this point. I think it went in front of the Conservation Commission, or not in front of the Conservation Commission, but I think Carol Brodel better saying that the ENF was suffice and they didn't need to do an EIR. And I think that's as far as it got with the town.
Sounds good. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think I'm parking Doug's house and bike away.
There's a trail through the woods behind my house, on my land, that used to be an old road. It's kind of cool. And it goes right over actually to that area, to the Hudson-Berlin line.
So it's an old dirt road.
Well, it's, I own a portion of it, and then it crosses into Berlin, it's somebody else.
Well, that corner of Sugar and Golden Run, if Sugar didn't take a left and he just went straight across through the woods up the hill, that was a road at some point, too.
So I think maybe we should hit on the other articles as well. Yeah?
Oh, this other one. So the.
So in your packet, there should be what Linda has so far for us.
The barn bylaw, just the renumbering?
There's a couple of different arms of the barn bylaw.
That's so confusing. I think it's just, it's following up.
Oh, that's right. You can't move on to it.
So we did that for, we did that for accessory apartments, but we need to do it for accessory uses.
So in your packet, there is a list of all the articles, so I thought we could just go through those one by one, so that way I have a better understanding of what I need to do to get them over the finish line. That would be good.
So for the, for the barn stable carehouse preservation bylaw, I'm going to send you the email from town council saying what wording we needed to do for the accessory use.
It's really just adding a line, right?
It's adding a line, they wouldn't let us do it at the, you know, last town meeting.
And then once I do that, is the first article, is that pretty much ready to go then?
The language is in there, and so.
So you don't need all of this. It's just, it's an amendment to the existing bylaw.
Okay.
And I don't think you need to list the whole bylaw by any means. You just need to say, you need to go to the paragraph that we're making the change and list the change.
Okay. And you said it has to do with accessory use.
Yeah.
So it's going to be, you know, 270, 271, barn stable care preservation bylaw, and that's going to be section.
I'll send it to everybody if you want to see it.
You know, whatever it is, section 2A, whatever, and then make this change.
Yeah.
It's a pretty simple change. Oh, it's right, it's there, it's the second one. This is it.
Oh, that is the second one.
So I think the first one is.
It's the renumbering.
Okay. Okay, okay, I didn't understand that. Okay, so the first one is renumbering to get it into compliance. Okay, so that's fine. And then the second one is the one that we were just discussing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I get confused every time, so I have to go back and look at the email. So the next one is the village overlay. So we are meeting on Monday with the owners of the Four Parces Village. I mean, everybody seems interested, you know, we'll see. I mean, but everybody seems like they will intend, we're going to meet with them individually, their feedbacks. We're going to send them some of the diagrams that we showed you, as well as the overlay language, the bylaw, and spend half hour, 20 minutes or half hour with each of them to give their feedback. So that's kind of our last to-do item. And then unless it comes back to the planning board. So the next thing is the FEMA maps. There's nothing, no issues there. I know some towns like along the coast have been really impacted by this, as I believe here have been impacted by the change in the FEMA maps. Insurance hasn't contacted you. That's good. And we have the road acceptances, that's pretty clear. Medical marijuana, they're just going to simplify that.
Ew.
This is way too long. And then we have the Act for Protection, which, you know, as I looked into it, it's very complex, so I think, you know, we need to do more work on it, and, you know, we need to discuss it more. So I don't think everybody in that town meeting, unless anybody felt strongly. That's it.
So we'll revise these. We need to schedule the hearings for when?
For the articles? By February 12th, because it needs to be before the final date, which is February 13th.
Does it?
Yeah.
These, I don't know, that's true. I think we have to have a hearing before town meeting.
Is this what I received from Linda for scheduling?
I think she's ready.
Right here.
Welcome to be the first meeting in February.
I don't ever remember having a hearing in February for a May town meeting. So I mean, I see that it says that happened the last time, but it's so.
I think that might be best intentions to.
to have the hearings before they're finalized, but I think we haven't passed...
That's why I was getting confused earlier. When you guys were talking about that, I was like...
Afterwards. Does anyone else have any opinion on that? I swear we've had hearings, you know, a month before town meeting.
Yeah, that's...
But I don't know.
But are they getting hearings on our own bylaws or...
Well, it's on any by, any bylaw change. We, the planning board has to hold hearings on any zoning bylaw change. So if a citizen's petition, like last time, they presented that we had to hold a hearing...
Right, decide whether we approved it or not.
So what the point of holding a hearing be to be able to make those changes before it gets printed?
That is, I think, the intent and I think that's probably why the schedule shows it so early. And, and we should do that if we can.
Because it's a hearing on a draft.
You should still make the changes at that point.
I mean, it should be a hearing on a draft and then you take people's opinions and maybe, you know, somebody has something that you missed. Add to it.
So if we have the hearing on February 12th, I need to post it in the newspaper for a seven-day and a 14-day notice. That means I need to get it to the newspaper two days before that, which is the 22nd, which is our next meeting. 22nd of January.
Well, so, I guess...
Should we change the date?
You need to talk. Erica could talk to Don.
I think we have more time than that. It's February 12th. Two days, two days, like January 27th or so.
Talk to Michelle.
There'll be three weeks between the last January and the first February.
I have two weeks after, two weeks before that being the 24th of January. If, I think you're counting, I'm probably counting business days that we can.
Talk to Michelle about, you know, I remember her saying there was like a squeaky way you could get things into the paper.
Okay.
You know, under the deadline somehow. You know, not, not a bad thing to do, but just that there were certain papers that had different deadlines. So we have...
I think we're pretty much, oh, I know what it was, yeah. Because if we go by Clinton item, we need to get it in by the 22nd. I, I think she said something about if we get it into a different paper, we possibly could get it in later.
I don't think we have a different paper.
Yeah, that's what the paper may have gone.
We used to have a whole, it's gone.
Isn't there another one? Maybe a more regional?
What is it that? What's, it's the Clinton what?
It's a, it's a item. It's part of the telegram, right?
Or the Worcester telegram.
That, that's the one she was talking about, the Worcester telegram.
Yeah, I suppose Worcester telegram we could do.
I can ask about that. But even still, I mean, I can't imagine there being much more of a room.
Right. So we have, we have to meet again and vote. Vote on everything.
So we have to have everything buttoned up at the next meeting.
Well, most of them are pretty straightforward, right? Pretty simple and are almost complete.
Yeah.
We're taking the Aquafer one off the list. So it's really just the medical marijuana and the village overlay that we need to really address. We're having...
You had some data that needed to be filled in on the maps.
Right, and I'm pretty sure I can find that.
But is that what needs to be printed in the warrant? Or is that just what needs to be sent to the people in town? When's the final submission for things to warrant?
You publish a draft in the paper for the...
Yeah.
Well, if you gotta hold a hearing, you have to have a published...
Something for the public to view.
But can it be a draft?
Can it be, can wording change?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But truly, the owner of all of this is Don. Because it's, it's, it's his schedule to get things to town meeting on time. And this is, you know, he's trying to really tighten it up. And it used to be a lot more fluid that things happened, you know, a little bit later on. And I understand that he's trying to tighten it up. But as far as your charge, he's the guy who's gonna tell you what you can and can't do, not us. He says this is the deal.
I guess I'm just, I'm just putting this out here. These are the dates and...
Yeah, no, you're right. Those are the dates that you have right now.
But, you know, we have our meeting dates and our, you know, so it's, you know, pushing back a little bit. And does everyone wanna meet on a Tuesday night?
No.
Is there anything else I can do to facilitate this?
Well, does it work if we approve everything that's due once today?
Possibly. I know for the Clinton item, Michelle was saying that it needed to be in by 12:00 PM. So that may not work. But if I can go, yeah, if I can get it into the Worcester, maybe it will work.
I know that the Economic Development Committee's put some articles in and if you let them know that it's coming and roughly what size it's gonna be and, you know, it maybe doesn't have to be the final, but just so they know spacing-wise and how they're gonna, you know, what it's gonna take, I think that, you know, they might be able to work with you for a day.
But do you, to post the notice in the paper, you don't put all...
No, it's just, it's just a notice. It's not, it's just a notice to say, you know, copies are available. Okay. Regardless.